Good evening, I'm calling to order our planning and zoning board meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. And the first order of business will ask our Secretary Crystal to give us a roll call. Yep.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Delacros?
Yeah.
Mr. Gielusis?
Yeah.
Mr. Stavropoulos?
Yes. Mr. St. Arnold? Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
And Mr. Jacob Carr?
Here.
Thanks.
I'm here too.
Yeah, Mr. Delacros is here. The, um, I just, Rodney, the minutes will be, uh-
They'll be ready for you, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. So what we're gonna do is move directly into the quasi judicial announcement by our attorney, Mr. Yakovon.
These are quasi judicial proceedings where the Board acts in a quasi judicial capacity. By law, it is the Board's function to make findings of fact based on the evidence presented at the hearings tonight and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria or standards contained in the Code of Ordinances to make a legal decision regarding the application before. The Board may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application in the applicable code sections. If the evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the evidence demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. The parties to this hearing are the applicant and the city. The city is represented by city staff. There may be persons, organizations, or groups that qualify as interveners. Persons or groups that qualify for intervenor status can participate in the hearing as a party. A recognized intervenor may cross-examine witnesses, present evidence, and make arguments to the Board. For a person to be granted intervenor status, the person must demonstrate to the Board that he or she will suffer an adverse impact as a result of the quasi judicial decision, which exceeds in degree that which may be suffered by the general community. Intervener status may be granted to the representative of an organization or group of persons who have a substantial and compelling interest in the matter under consideration if the organization or group of persons can demonstrate that it is prepared to present evidence, competent and relevant evidence, which would be of significant assistance to the Board in making its quasi judicial decision. In a few minutes, the Chairman will give persons, organizations, or groups desiring intervenor status the opportunity to make their request. There is an established procedure that will be followed at these hearings. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying at the hearing must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and materials to the issues under consideration. City staff will present its testimony evidence first. The applicant and recognized interveners will have an opportunity to cross-examine the city staff and any city witnesses. The applicant will then present its witnesses and evidence. City staff and recognized interveners will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Recognized interveners will then present their evidence and witnesses. City staff and applicants have the opportunity to cross-examine intervenor witnesses. After unusual circumstances to be determined by the Board, a party's opening statement and presentation is limited to ten minutes. At that point, we proceed to the public comment portion of the meeting. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public opposing the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have the same opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. A member of an organization or group granted intervenor status who testifies as part of the organization or group's presentation forfeits the right to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. During the public portion, during the public comment portion of the meeting, members of the public present at a hearing may donate their time to a speaker to extend the speaker's time, but in doing so, the person donating the time forfeits his or her right to speak. Each donation shall extend the speaker's time an additional two minutes. In no event shall the speaker's time be extended beyond ten minutes of total speaking time. Following public comment, the applicant, city staff, and recognized interveners will have an opportunity to present rebuttal evidence and make a closing argument or summary. The applicant will go first, followed by city staff and any interveners. After unusual circumstances to be determined by the Board, a party's closing summary and rebuttal evidence will be limited to ten minutes each. Following this, the Board will consider the matter. At this point, I would ask all persons who tend to testify at these hearings tonight, and that means come up and say something at the microphone, to raise your right hand and take the following oath. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I have affirmations all around, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Yakovon. This first application, I want to ask, twelve fifty-seven Denami Holdings, is there any ex parte communications that needs to be divulged at this time by any Board member?
Nope.
No.
Okay, since there's none, we can go ahead and have the staff give the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application is site plan for phased open and covered boat and recreational vehicle storage office and warehouse. The property is located at two forty Ankle Road, it's a little under ten acres, and it is zone industrial restricted. You see on the staff report that TRC reviewed the project on February twenty eighth and had quite a few comments, and you see those listed on page two and three and part of four. We had been working pretty diligently with the applicant to satisfy the comments, and you'll see that all our comments were addressed on the March fourth, the recent middle of the plan. I'll just hit the highlights of the site plan to break it down to you in simple terms. Under B on page four, the construction schedule of this project is slightly different from what you normally see. The applicant is requesting a seven-phase project. Phase one, which would begin immediately, includes one hundred and seventy-nine open RV and boat storage spaces, retention areas one A, one B, and two. Phase two, phase two, excuse me, which will commence in two thousand and fifteen, would be a covering for fifty-six of those open RV and boat storage spaces, the crushed concrete drive dumpster pad with the wood stockade fence and a secondary drive access. Phase three, in two thousand and seventeen, would be the construction of a twelve thousand six hundred square foot office slash warehouse building, the asphalt drive out and parking lot that supports that building as well as a chain link fence. Phase four, which is in two thousand and nineteen, would include a ten thousand eight hundred square foot office warehouse building, again, another asphalt drive and parking lot, dumpster pad, and wood stockade fence. Phase five in two thousand and twenty-one is covering for forty RV and boat storage spaces, crushed concrete drives, seventy open RV and boat storage spaces, retention areas three and four, and a dumpster pad with fence. Phase six in two thousand and twenty-three, twelve thousand six hundred square foot office warehouse building and asphalt drive out and parking lot. And phase seven in two thousand and twenty-five is again another twelve thousand six hundred square foot office warehouse building, asphalt drive, parking lot, dumpster pad, and wood stockade fence. All utilities are available to the site. The site plan exceeds the one space per fifteen hundred square feet of gross floor area requirement for our street parking. You'll see that the landscape plan is on sheet C eighteen, combination of several trees, grass, and the like. Under J, there was an environmental assessment that was done by Dr. Donald Richardson, and that report is noted and attached in your staff report. The report identified four active and one inactive and one abandoned gopher tortoise burrows on the site. The applicant will relocate those tortoises consistent with the jurisdictional agency restrictions during phase five of the project. We also reviewed the requests against the most recent database for Eagle Ness locations and did not identify any. Again, hitting the high points, we evaluated the requests against our level of service standards and did not identify any conflicts with our adopted standards. We had not received any public correspondence. Our staff recommendation is that the Board should consider approving the site plan for phases one through four subject to the following conditions. One, the developer is responsible for acquiring all other jurisdictional permits and for meeting the minimum criteria of the land development code. Two, the site plan shall expire within one year effective date unless an application has been filed for a building permit. Three, construction plan signed and sealed by registered engineer, like for instance in the state of Florida, must be submitted for phase one within one year of the date of final site plan approval. The site plan shall be considered expired if this deadline is not met. Four is the same verbiage except then we're substituting it out for phase two, which has to be submitted by December thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen. Condition five is for phase three, that has to be submitted for construction plan approval by December thirteenth of, excuse me, December thirty-first of two thousand and seventeen. Condition six is for phase four of the project, which has to be submitted by December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. Condition seven is that city staff reserves the right to require a new site plan if there are major changes to codes and the regulations during this time period. There was a lot of discussion from the Public Services Department, Public Works, the Fire Department, and the Building Department about changing codes and standards and how, because of cycles and updates and amendments, that there may be changes that will be required once construction plans are submitted. And then eight is the extension of the buildings must be substantially similar to the renderings submitted by the applicant. With your backup, you have an area map showing the general location of the property. You also have an aerial photograph, a zoning map, future land use map, you have a set of site plans, the environmental assessment that I referenced earlier, building elevations, and you also have a notice of intended agency action for the environmental resource permit from the Southwest Water Water Management District as well. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can for you.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. St. Arnold. Do you have any questions for us, Tom?
No questions right now.
Mr. Gielusis?
I don't have any questions either.
Mr. Vincent, do you have any questions for us, Sam?
Just one or two for now. Rodney, on the two access points on Ankle Road-
Mm-hmm.
It looks like those are pretty close together. I mean, is there a DOT ordinance or regulation about how close those access points are, how with the minimum distance between the two? And also, I don't see that there's any deceleration lanes. You know, Ankle Road, a narrow road, two-lane road, and if you're gonna have, you know, RV units and trailers and that sort of thing going in and out of there, I wonder, is there enough space to do like a turn lane to get into it?
Uh, Mr. Vincent, the actual frontage on Ankle Road is four hundred and forty-one feet of frontage, and I can get your measurement here between those aprons here and there.
Looks like maybe about a hundred feet or so between those two access.
It's about eighty-four feet, and that's well within the code tolerance. We have a seventy-five foot separation requirement for a driveway.
Okay. If you looked a little closer to me, I didn't know what the ordinance was. Did any of the TRC comments have to do with, you know, whether or not there should be any kind of a deceleration lane? I mean, it's not a fast travel in roads there.
Right. It didn't come up in discussion primarily because of the speed limit of Ankle Road and also because of type of use that is contemplated for this development. But if the Board feels that it's a necessary safety improvement, then that could be added to listing conditions.
Well, it just seems like, you know, with this type of facility, they're gonna be using larger vehicles, you know, the RV units might be the size of a bus or whatever-
Right.
-and the turning radiuses and that sort of thing. I don't know how they will interact with the traffic that's on Ankle Road. They might need more space to come in and out of those driveways.
Okay.
I don't hear any other questions at this time. Okay.
Rodney, I'm assuming staff have discussed your recommendations with the applicant?
Yes.
And are they in agreement with your recommendations? Yes or no?
They are not, no.
Thank you. Now, uh, let me narrow it down to a couple of things, 'cause I see a couple of things that would be factors, but the biggest thing I would like to know right off the bat, 'cause that's gonna affect how I'm gonna approach this. Have they agreed to doing this for just phase one through four, or are they insistent on pushing through for approval on the whole project?
That's a question for them.
Okay. That's it for now, thanks Rodney.
Okay, Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, just have one question. Seven, number seven, major changes, how you address that kind of, you know, is that, if this gets approved, and those are the words, I mean, what are considered major? I mean, I know what the word means, but as it relates to the legality of major changes.
I know it's a more a subjective term, but I believe that staff wants that flexibility because fire codes and things like that get updated here every few years, and so what would be a code requirement now may be modified in three to five years. So we want to make it clear that we wanna have that flexible budget, make sure that we can enforce the appropriate regulations when the construction plans are submitted.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Carr?
No questions, but I think Mr. Vincent makes a valid point with the speed line, or the speed line set at a decent rate on the Ankle Road, but the way people drive Ankle Road is a little bit different than the speed line, so I think he makes a pretty valid point in what he said.
I have one more thing to add if I may.
Okay. Mr. Delacros?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to follow up on one more thing. Being that we're not sure if we're talking about all the property or the south part of the property, a lot of times with some of these large vacant pieces of parcel, we've, I saw in the site plan a listing of all the trees, but I didn't see any kind of staff assessment as far as any tree mitigation. It looks like more trees are going out as compared to the landscaping and screening plan, and when I look through the sheets, you know, I can see where most of the work is on the lower section and such and that nature, so it could have been possible, you know, it's your assumption you're not gonna handle the north property, wouldn't need to be a tree mitigation assessment, but I don't know if there was any addressing of that, or if you could share anything with us with regards to that aspect.
Well, as you know, Richard Hague handles that aspect of the site plan review, and he made it clear to the applicant that if the entire site was going to be developed, there would be quite a bit of tree mitigation that'd be required based on the current code requirements. But that's as far as the conversation went. Once we, staff, determined that we're only going to recommend approval of phases one through four, then, you know, that was the end of that subject for that time period. And as you know, whenever he comes through for construction plans on that north half of the property, there will be tree removal permit and mitigation plan that will be worked out between the applicant and the engineering department to make sure that those code requirements aren't satisfied.
Well, and I appreciate that, and that's why, to me, knowing ahead of time as we discuss this, if we're talking about one through four or the whole thing, you know, but we'll approach it one through four at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot one item that I wanted to discuss.
Go ahead, Mr. Vincent.
Rodney, I don't know if there's any reference here, I see it somewhere in the staff report on lighting, and I don't think we have a comprehensive lighting ordinance, but I know that these types of projects, I've heard complaints from citizens in the past, and I've seen it myself, where the lighting on these type of facilities causes a lot of glare and obtrusive lighting on the neighboring landowners, especially here you have residents on at least one side of it, and whatever gets done, I think there should be a requirement that outdoor lighting be shielded so that not to be obnoxious to the neighboring owners or to traffic, because if you go down Ankle Road near Portalk and Raina heading west, there's a light there, and I forget the name of the Raina, and it almost blinds you when you're driving. It's one of those lights that is supposed to be shining on the building or something, and it's just horrible. It's really a traffic danger, and, you know, I wish we would work on getting the comprehensive lighting ordinance, because this is, you know, it's all over the city, these kind of lighting problems.
Rodney, is there something that can be added to the recommendation?
Yes, that can be a condition as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Timmy, I just wanted to ask you just a definition, what a jurisdictional wetland is?
That's a wet- it's a wetland that's been verified by a governing agency, normally the Water Management District. In this particular case, there was some preliminary survey information that called an area a wetland, but when the applicant applied for the jurisdictional permit, that was not, it was determined that it was not a jurisdictional wetland on the property.
They called it, and it's in, it's in the ERP from Swift Mud, they call it an upland cut pond, point zero four acres. The difference being, I think, that if it's a jurisdictional wetland, it takes in ordinances and restrictions with Swift Mud and, you know, there's loops that they have to jump through.
Okay. Okay, any more questions for staff at this time? If not, we'll move to the applicant. Are you the applicant, sir? If you'll go up to the lectern and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Ralph Hansen, I'm a representative of the applicant.
You wanna pick up the mic a little bit? I mean, just, no, no.
Yes.
Yeah, just, you can take it off of there, I believe. There you go.
My name is Ralph Hansen, I'm a project manager for Goulish and Associates, two seventy-two O D S Lake Road, Tucker Springs, three four six eight eight. I'd like to address some of the comments. The question about turning off the road, I don't know if you noticed it or not, but the gates are located far enough back that anything that we would anticipate being located there could pull fully off the road without blocking the traffic, and that's the reason they're located that far back. I've done several of these, and that works very well, because they just have to slow down and pull off the road. They have a fifty-foot radius on those turnouts, much larger than you have like in downtown here, so that they can pull out, pull out into that turnout without having to almost stop, so that reduces the problem with the traffic. In fact, we have found that a lot of times a DLT would prefer that kind of turnout rather than a right turn lane, because all too often, people don't know how to use a right turn lane, and they still turn out right before it, and so we try to do it this way to make sure that we guide the people completely off the road. So, I mean, it has had some thought in it, and there is a reason why it was done that The basic problem that we have, or the staff's recommendation, is the fact that they don't wanna recommend phases five, six, and seven, because they extend the period out to two thousand and twenty-five. Let me point out that once the first four phases are done, the project is pretty well locked in. I mean, what else can you do with the rest of it except what we proposed? I mean, you can't change the back of it to residential or any other use, because there's no access to it once you've done this. The timing, unfortunately, was developed, because as you are well aware, the economy has not been the greatest over the last five, six years. And although we're anticipating an improvement in the economy, no one is willing to gamble or guarantee that this is gonna happen. And so, when I first approached staff, I said, "We want to phase this," and they said, "Well, come up with a proposal for phasing it." And this is what we came up with, it was a seven-year phasing that was logical and was followed through over that period. And we're locked in almost completely by the use in the front, by the use, or the use in the back. I mean, you can't put warehousing behind the storage, boat storage, and stuff like that, and it doesn't really make much sense to put boat storage behind the warehousing. So, the whole thing has been set up just to that purpose. I understand that the rules may change over that period of time, but they've pretty well locked us in with, you know, stipulation number seven. So, I mean, if there's a major change that would affect the public, that they could address it. Now, there's some issues like fire sprinkling and so on that we know we're gonna have to address differently over a period of time. Those issues have been evolving for the last fifteen, twenty years, and they're gonna continue to evolve. But as far as planning goes, we would like to be able to have this plan approved for that seven-year period. We have submitted it in its entirety, but they've approved the concept in its entirety, and staff has reviewed the concept in its entirety and approved it. Their problem is, is just this timeline, you know, because they're saying, well, that's what, twenty-five is, that's thirteen years, that's a long, or twelve years, that's a long time. But as you're well aware, that once you get locked into a project, oftentimes it moves much faster than you hope, and if you don't allow us to go ahead with those other phases, and we find out in the third year that we wanna finish out, for instance, phases one, two, and five, we wouldn't be able to. Or if we wanted to put in all of the office warehouse at the third or the fourth year or the fifth year, if we don't have the approvals on the back phases, we can't do that. This is only a maximum schedule, it's not a minimum schedule. So then if the economy turns around, the market improves, they could go ahead and do this, maybe much quicker than we propose, and we're just looking for a little bit of safety factor in extending the timeout in case what we hope will happen doesn't happen.
There was another issue that you brought up. Lighting?
Lighting. The site has lighting on it already. We're not really adding much lighting. I'm not even sure if it's hooked up right now, but the site has been lit in the past, and there are light poles on the site, and we're just reusing the light poles, shifting a little bit to miss the buildings and so on. So, that is not something new to the neighborhood, I mean, it's been that way in the past, and the neighborhood is old enough that it must have been that way during the time when the lights were being used. Now, we don't have any objection to shielding the lights and so on, but nearest light pole to property line is like a hundred feet away, and they're not, you know, a thousand kil- a thousand watt lights, they're like six hundred watt or four hundred watt lights, so they're not real powerful lights. And the other thing was that when we discussed the project with your police chief, or police representative, he was concerned about there being adequate lighting, because these sites, because they don't have full-time representative on them, are very subject to theft, and people cut the fence, go in there at night, steal the boat motors, steal the batteries, whatever. In fact, they've already had some theft on the site already. And so it's important for your police department to have adequate lighting on their site. So, we have tried to furnish adequate lighting, if there is a problem with the neighbors, we can know or suggest that as far as how to shield it as time goes by. So, take it since we're phasing it.
Well, I know that security lighting is important, but often there's, if you have too much glare, then you have less security, because someone looking at the project will be blinded by the lights and can't see, you know, the activity actually going on. So, I mean, it's, just because you have more light doesn't necessarily make it more secure. But I understand that there's a need to have some lighting so that- But I understand that there's a, a need to have some lighting so that, uh, you know, there can be some security. But, uh, I'm, I'm really much against lighting that would cause a glare for people driving along Anvil Road and also the people that live on, uh, on the areas where the residential projects are.
Well, the lighting is set back a fair amount from Anvil Road because we're not concerned about riding along Anvil Road. I mean, it's like a hundred feet back or more, in some cases two hundred feet back. So, I mean, the, the lighting isn't something that's right up the road. It's off the road so that the police, and the other thing is, if you, like you say, if you, if you put it real close to the road, you blind the police, and they can't see what's going on beyond the lights. So we try to put the lights back far enough so that it would give a, a good visibility from the road, not, you know, on the road.
Well, I just want to be sure that issue is considered when planning the lighting for the project.
Well, we have the lighting shown on the plans. So, I mean, if, if you see a, a location that's...
I'm not sure the fielding is shown, I mean, you know, the fixtures may be shown in the polls, but, uh...
Well, that's, that's adjustable is, is, you know, I mean, uh, uh, these are residents of Tarpon Springs. I mean, they're not, you know, people who are developing this. I mean, you know, they've been here for generations, I guess. So it's not something that, you know, they want to create a problem for the neighbors.
Well, I appreciate that.
I think that's about it.
Okay, uh, we'll have some questions for you at, at this time. Uh, we'll start down here with, uh, Mr. Carr, if you have questions for the applicant.
It says there's a significant, a, a significant amount of trees out there removed if you go past phase four. Um, are you guys prepared in that aspect, and if you talk to city staff, and like what needs to be done along the line?
Yeah, well, this, I, in fact, I've talked to the owners about what had to be done, which is unfortunately, in order to put something on a site, uh, you have to comply with the rules. And by the time we got done complying with all the rules, we lost a lot of trees that we were trying to save. I mean, for instance, uh, uh, in the drive areas and stuff like that, you can't have trees where somebody could run into. So we were forced to take out more trees than we initially planned on. So I have advised the owners that they have to pay for those trees, and that it's going to cost them quite a few thousands of dollars each one of these phases. And so that the city will be gaining, uh, a tree fund of a substantial amount to, uh, replace the trees that they're going to be taking out.
Okay. Are there any other further questions, sir?
Mr. Chambers?
Mr. Chambers, can I, could Rodney for a question about this phasing? Rodney, what, why is the city opposed to phasing besides the timeframe, or is it...
Uh, primarily because of the changing, uh, nature of codes and, and regulations. Uh, because what, for example, what was allowed under the two thousand and ten Florida Building Code would be different than what is allowed under today's building code.
Would section seven take care of that?
Uh, po- potentially, yes, mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. July, can I say any questions for the applicant?
Um... You said your name was Ralph? And you're an engineer, or what's yours?
Actually, I, I...
How, how are you representing the owner here in what capacity?
I work with Goulish and Associates, uh, I have been in...
Who is, what are they? Are they an engineering firm or a real estate firm?
They're an engineering firm.
Okay, are you an engineer?
I am an engineer. I'm not a P E at the present because I'm somebody retired, and I'm, I'm P E last. But I was an engineer for forty years, so I mean, I, you know.
Um, I'd like to ask something, a couple things right off the bat. Um... You made a statement earlier that phase one through four had to be, I mean, it was, we had, you had to have approval on five through seven because you already know what one through four is going to be, and the land on the north side is basically, I, the impression I got you said is it's locked in such that that's the only thing you could do with the property. Is that correct, what you stated?
Well, I'm saying that it's difficult to find any other use for it except what we plan to do with it once you put in phases one through four because, uh, you have no frontage, you have no access to it. The only access to that site, other than the site, the access to it, show, is a road from the rear that goes through a residential area.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear. There is access to the north side of the property, other than through the south side of the property, correct? I'm not asking you to describe how the access is. I want to hear again on record that there is access to the north side of the property other than going through the south side of the property, is that correct?
Right, it's shown on the plans.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So the north side development is not necessarily totally dependent on access from the south?
It's not totally dependent, I didn't say it was totally dependent. I said it's very difficult to...
Well, in a changing environment, your phase two, or where's my phase page? Uh, phase, page, page, four, page, okay, one is now twenty fifteen is two seventeen and nineteen, and even in the staff recommendations to phase four, you have till December twenty nineteen. That, to me, is over six and a half years just to get your first site section done.
First four section.
And we cannot predict here on this board, or the board of commissioners, or yourself, what the situation will be at that time. On our agenda tonight is another aspect for Marina boat storage. I don't know, you're doing boat and RV, but I remember not too long ago, boats were dime a dozen. We go through phases, and I don't want to have to approve something that is not necessarily needed to be approved at this time. So I am going to focus on the site plan for phase one through four.
That's your priority.
That's fine, because that's what we're going to focus on now. In the environmental assessment that I received, there is a, um, supposedly, uh, figure four, that says listed animal and plant species as a legend, A B, I N, A C, O R. So nowhere in this environmental report am I seeing a correlation between where the actual gopher sites are and the fern site is correlated to the map.
They staked them in the field, and the surveyor located them.
Okay, all I'm going by is my staff report, sir. Rodney, you need to show them another copy, or I have an extra here. Supposed to be a figure here indicating. So I guess my question to you, are these active tortoise burrows, inactive tortoise burrows, or abandoned tortoise burrows in the northern part or the southern part of the property?
They're all north of the fence.
North of the fence?
Yeah.
See, if you agree to one through four, you're going to save yourself a whole bunch of environmental issues. Now, let's go to the Swift Mud thing. I know they said, uh, upland cut pond within the project in the area. Permanent impacts are conceptually proposed to the entire, entire pond, no mitigation is required. Well, the reason they say mitigation is not required is because under this subsection, wetland mitigation is not required for impacts. The upland cut ponds that are wholly owned, which is this case, not shared with another property owner, are less than one acre in size, which has been established, and do not provide significant habitat. Well, that can be beg to differ. Uh, I guess my question, uh, of you at this point, it refers twice in this report, uh, that permanent impacts are conceptually proposed to the entire pond. I would like you to elaborate what those permanent impacts are.
All right, number one, the pond was dug for irrigation purposes. That's the reason the pond was dug. It was dug by man recently, you know, in the last thirty years, something like that, twenty-five years. So what we're going to do is fill it, because if we dug it, we're going to fill it.
Fill it with what?
Dirt.
New dirt?
Uh, probably because there isn't sufficient, I don't think, uh, based on my calculations, there's insufficient around the pond.
And, and the, uh, notes in the, uh, site plan, they're asking you to remove all debris and bring in new fill. Sir, will you be bringing in new fill?
Yes.
All new fill and removing all debris?
Not all new fill, because we're digging some ponds, and some of the dirt under the ponds can be used for fill. You must have watched it.
Do you have a copy of your site plan?
Yes, right here.
Are your tree list planned?
Yes. Which tree?
This one.
The master one?
It's all your trees, number forty-seven.
All right.
Can you show me on your orthographical map where number forty-seven is?
Number forty-seven?
Um, I don't know.
That's just for information, that's a forty-eight inch diameter grand oak.
I don't create this plan, it was created by the surveyor.
Okay, so you're coming before us, trying to get us to accept the site plan you're not familiar with.
Well, yes, and, but not by, you know, we asked me where a tree is, we've talked of six hundred trees.
Okay, well, you missed...
I mean, please. I mean, you didn't give me any free time to prepare.
Okay, well, you need to reset this...
Tree number in, is it forty-seven, you said?
Yeah, it's a forty-eight inch oak.
And that's a oar oak too, if I remember. Oar oaks only live thirty, forty, maybe fifty years. So a tree that size will probably be dead in the next ten years on its own.
I could, I could confirm what you just said, oar oaks, a live oak that size...
No, that's a large oak.
I understand, a live oak that size will live longer, and that aspect of oar oak is reaching the max of its life longevity at that size, sir.
Oar oaks will only live, the site was an out of corner pavement just a few weeks ago. Uh, they, it was a, a historic tree in, I don't remember, Gate City or someplace. And the issue was that the tree was probably forty, forty, forty-five years old, and then you think it was going to live very much longer because they only have a lifespan of fifty years. So, I mean, yes, it's a large tree, but you have to take into account that it's lived probably ninety percent of its life. So, you know, it's, it's, you took in proportion, you, okay, where is forty-seven, where is forty-seven?
Um... Well, even so, I, if you want to go by live oaks, I can see a lot of them. I guess my concern is, is it appears that the predominance, and it even refers to it in the environmental aspect, as an oak hammock in the north side. And at this point, I can see logic in what you're trying to do on the south side, but I don't see logic in us locking the city, the board, this board or any other board for the north part of the, uh, project. And...
Uh, well, let me ask you this, if that's, if you feel that, it's...
Well, I don't feel it, staff recommended, no, no, I say, excuse me, staff recommended it. Staff recommended it. I see other values beyond staff concerns.
Well, the staff is concerned about the longevity of the project, and not what we were doing because they approved what we were doing.
And that's my concern also.
So if your issue is a length...
I don't want to lock in a future board thirty years from now.
But if we reduce the longevity of the project.
Now, we'll go back to some of the, uh, C R C things. Uh, I guess maybe Rodney, have most of these things been satisfied by the various departments?
Yes.
Okay. Because number seven here says provide a table by phase showing the type and size of trees to be removed. Have you been provided the table?
Yes, if you look on the right-hand side of the each sheet for each phase, it includes a table by phase that shows the size and the type and the number of trees that'll be, to be removed by phase.
And then on number ten, where it says screening is required, uh, requires one tree every twenty-five, and it says talks about natural vegetation area buffer.
Mm-hmm.
What type of buffer are they providing for the residential side on the east side?
Residential to the east and residential to the north.
Well, the north won't be affected unless they develop the north parcel.
To the east, they're providing the, uh, the quota requirement for the one tree every twenty-five feet, uh, and it's showing along that, uh, eastern property line.
Will there be fencing?
Yes.
What type of fencing?
There's already a trend like that, sir.
Is the, is the property actively being used as an RV boat storage currently?
No.
What is it being used for currently, then?
It's not being used, uh, the owners have a couple of vehicles stored on it, and that's it.
And you had mentioned earlier it had been used years ago, but otherwise it's been vacant for a number of years till just of late?
Yes.
But there's no...
All right, can you go up to the microphone, please give us your name and address?
My name is Nick Mavramatis, and my address is two thirteen High Street in Tarpon Springs. Uh, years back, and not too many years back, that was an RV and boat storage. Um, was that for many years. That's why there's lighting there now. There's several Florida Power, Progress Energy, whatever the heck it is now, lights that are up on the property, and we have reactivated them to have light on there. And we have some trucks and miscellaneous items stored on the property.
Of your personal nature or as a commercial business? Okay, and, um, these photographs that we received here as far as rendering, are these, is, this is not a facility that's there then already?
Correct, I wish it was.
All right, so this is a, a fictional rendering of what you propose, or where did, can you explain? Because my assumption was you already had something on the property because the sign-out front's got like an eight-four-five number, and it, you know, looks like you may have superimposed something on the...
No, that's a project I did in Penalt, Paso County on, uh, Old Fifty High Line that, uh, was an RV, uh, RV storage, and those are the couple of the buildings that were erected on that.
Okay.
Among others, other projects, I mean, that was one.
Now, one of the things when I look at the actual site plans and the phasing, uh, in your phasing, you talk about immediately hundred and seventy-nine open RV and boat storage spaces in your retention areas, but you're not putting any kind of, I guess, well, here in phase two in twenty fifteen is when you're talking about putting in a crushed concrete drive. So I guess what my concern is, is for two years that this is going to be an RV boat storage place. What is it that they're driving in and out, compacted dirt, is it...
It's compacted, uh, it looks like they've got some lime rock in there that they put in, you know, a little bit to, uh, stabilize the soil a little bit, but it's not really what I would call sufficient for, uh, classical or class. You know, they want to put a nice storage place in there.
So why are, why are we not waiting, why is it that there won't be some sort of, uh, you know...
Because the layout that I have for the phase one doesn't overlay the layout for phase two, except in some, some, a few instances. And then plus the area to the west is all going to be torn out anyway, so it would seem like it would be, um, nonproductive to put in, uh, roads in an area that you're going to change, uh, within a couple of years. And they're only hoping to rent a hundred and seventy-nine, you know, unless they get a hundred, they're like, all of that is...
I'm hearing, I'm hearing your testimony, but when I look at the site plan for dimensions for phase one and phase two, I'm not seeing any difference in...
How much between phase two and phase three?
The actual layout of the property, and I guess my, my concern was, is in phase two, you have a, a boat wash area designated, yet I can't see how customers are gonna not want, for two years, wash their RVs or, or boats somewhere, so, uh, you know, and I'm a concerned about what type of drainage you've got, you, without putting in, you know, some established roadway, I, I'm- Talk to me, wha, are you gonna be, you know, what's, what's the process here?
Well, we don't know if we'll have, if we'll have a place for them to wash.
Speak into the mic, we can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
Yeah, you can take it off.
Uh-
I don't wanna hold it, just lift it.
Um, we don't know if we're going to have a boat wash area or not at that time. If we have to have a boat wash area or deem it's necessary, we'll do what's required to accommodate the boat wash area.
Seems like too many unknowns being waited still to the future.
All right, um- Mr. Delakis, can you move it along?
Go for tortoise relocation. Are you familiar with the relocation process?
Yes.
Have you contacted, uh, Fish and Wildlife Commission and begun that process?
Done on this one.
Okay. Uh... It refers here, and I know it's technical, it says the top of the bank of the retention, retention ponds must be at least five feet from all property lines, and that's been accommodated?
Yep. Staff was careful to make sure we did.
Okay. Oh, here we go, engineering comments, review comments. Number four, all construction debris including asphalt based material and concrete must be removed from the site, not buried. So, that's, uh, something you're complying with?
Well, I don't know if you can hear me, if it says it there, we're going to comply with it.
Okay. Cause it says must identify what surface materials proposed for the area outside, must provide a detail for the sewer dump station. Are you going to be able, Rodney there connecting up the sewer there?
We have a lift station and everything provided.
So, you're going to be putting in a lift station?
Yeah.
Okay, so then that answers that. Um, now, in that section here, it says storm water, water ponds one, two, and four at the top of bank elevation, which will obstruct the historic drainage flow from off-site. And then later on number thirteen, it says uncontrolled sheet flow into the ponds will cause erosion, and, uh, must provide an erosion and sedimentation control plan, and then wet ponds must be designed to control mosquito and cat tamper. So, uh, and I noticed on the plan, it looks like on the east side, there's a swale you're creating, and then you've got a number of retention ponds.
Yes.
What's the swale there for? To keep prop, water from running off your property into the adjacent neighborhood?
No, the, one of the basic requirements of, uh, when you get a permit from Southwest Water Management District, is that you treat all the water that runs around your property. If you bypass that water around your property, you don't have to treat it. Since, uh, we're able to bypass, it, it's right now, it's over sheet flooring over the property anyway out into the ditch. So, all we're doing is creating a controlled path for it to get to the ditch instead of the sheet flooring over the property.
Okay, and when you say-
Did you do his job?
So, you're, you're saying you're going to be putting a swale on, around the outer perimeter of the whole property, or just the sediment type?
Right where it's shown on the plan.
Say again?
Right where it's shown on the plan.
Then in that case, uh, would you browse, uh, directly which sheet that you're referring to with regards to the ditch and the swale?
Did, did you not mention the ditch and the swale? Did you see it somewhere?
Yeah, I saw it on one of the plans, but you seem to have, uh, some additional knowledge, maybe you can-
Um-
This is in getting back to the sheet, I think it was maybe the-
Uh, 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 let's see, no, it'd be sheet, um, nine, maybe sheet nine. Cause nine is, nine and ten, or eight, nine of the drainage, nine and ten of the drainage.
Uh, page, paving and drainage south, one half.
The, uh, on sheet, on sheet eight, sheet nine, i- it shows the swale and all the drainage, uh, for the south.
You need to speak into the mic so the board can hear you.
Uh, sheet nine has all the drainage details on it. If you put all the details on one sheet, you can't even read it, even with what we have, you cannot really read it.
Yeah, and that's why we need the reference, so on, where's the sheet number there, page? Oh, yeah, C nine, okay. So, up on the, uh-
The, 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 the area, it's a swale.
Part of the boundary says swale, 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 and that's on the eastern side of retention area one B. Uh, I don't see swales on the west side, but that's where that whole retention area two is. Uh, where is the ditch you were referring to?
It's a swale, or the ditch out front. The ditch along the road.
Out front, where?
Along, on Anquot Road.
Okay, so you're, ditch to you out front is on the south boundary of the property of Anquot Road?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I ha, I'm not familiar with the property, so when you say there's the ditch, I'm not sure where you're referring to. So, the swale on the east side will capture runoff from your property and direct it-
No, not from our-
South to a ditch?
Not from our property. Not from our property. It captures the water from the property next door.
Okay, and?
Drains to the ditch.
Okay, so there's-
And it currently does.
Okay, so, in your construction plans here, uh, all the drainage is inward into your property?
Correct.
Okay. And what type of filtration system will you be using?
These are dry ponds, so we'll be using natural soil. It gives about ninety-five percent removal. In fact, one of the questions that came up by Swift Mud was, is the Anquot River, which is now a, which is only a class-two river, means, means it's semi-polluted. It's got too much phosphate and it's got too much lead in it, so they asked us to demonstrate to them that what we were doing was improving the quality of the water, that we were discharging to the Anquot River, which we did, and they accepted it.
I don't think you can hurt it much more, I mean.
Uh, well, they're trying to approve it.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, and then, uh, on, I guess on our page, excuse me, in the staff report, uh, Rodney kinda addressed the fire stuff, seems like, um, there's a, some issues or something, but-
Mr. Delakis, uh, no, that's right, look, uh, you're on page three, is that correct? You're, you're reading off of page three right now for the fire department review comments?
Well, I, I've been on page three.
Okay, but, uh, look, wait, look on page four, look on page four, it says all TRC comments were addressed on the three, four, thirteen recent metals, so-
Yeah, well, we're, we're now, we're in April, and I wanna put things on the record.
I'm gonna ask you to quit, wait. I'm calling, um, um, listen.
Putting things on the record.
Listen, uh, these things were already addressed.
Yep.
If you wanna move on, you move on past the red comments.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're gonna have to stop. You're dragging this meeting unnecessarily, and you guys-
I have questions, I need to make sure that they've been addressed properly.
You're making, uh, a pain of yourself.
I apologize if you consider I'm being a pain. I think I'm asking questions within my jurisdiction.
These, these were already addressed.
And, they may have been addressed, but I need to hear it on record how they've been addressed, and if you allow me to move on to the last section of questions here.
Um, I'm gonna ask Mr., uh, Chapman, uh, Rodney, were these things already addressed? I believe you said that earlier?
Yes.
Okay, can you move past the, uh, and move forward?
I am moving forward.
So, we can get this meeting allowed?
Uh, moving along. Doing my questioning, on-
Okay, I think you're acting unnecessarily.
Page four, where it says prohibit stormwater into the sanitary sewer system. And it says boat wash needs a roof cover. Is, that would be in one of the laser phases, in like phase three, phase four?
No, I'm phase two.
Phase two, okay.
It's part of the, the, it will be part of the facility that's built for washing the trailer, or the, or the boat, will be the cover, cover. You can't build one without the other.
Okay. And then as far as, uh, the maintenance of the stormwater ponds, are they, the ponds, within the fencing?
Yes, it's required by state law that they're maintained by the property owner.
Okay.
Or homeowner's, or, uh, property owner's association, essentially the single property owner, it's required by law that he maintains them.
Okay, so I need to know. Are you done?
Yeah.
Mr. Vincent, do you have any questions? For the applicant, please.
No, I don't think so, thank you.
Mr. Jelusis? Stand by.
No, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, please have a seat, gentlemen. Okay, I would like to ask, uh, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak against this application? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for it? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of the meeting, and I will entertain a motion regarding this application at this time.
Motion, motion to pass application number twelve fifty-seven?
Per staff recommendation, Captain.
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Mr., uh, Delakis. Um, Mr. Vincent, did you want to add something about the lighting?
Yes, I, I'd like to see something in the, uh, conditions that, uh-
All right, would you, uh, would you like to, uh, would you like to make an amendment at this time?
I, I would like to add, in addition to the staff recommendations and qualifications, uh, in the report-
All right.
That, um, the applicant demonstrate that the lighting, uh, for the project at each phase would not be, uh, obtrusive to neighboring, uh, residential property owners or to traffic on Anquot Road.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. All right, uh, any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
On this app, application?
Yeah.
Well, the amendment we're voting on first.
Yeah, I, I, I might have another amendment to this thing, and I just wanna-
Well, uh-
So, I mean, however you wanna proceed.
Go ahead, well-
I, I mean, if I can ask, I just-
Go ahead, what is your amendment? We, we're just-
One through seven, I mean, if, if, if all things considered are tied, are, are tied back into number seven here, major, may, may, all, any staff reserves rights require a new site plan if there's any major changes. And they can produce, they can produce this project, and allowing them to continue to go past stage four, and they get to step number five, and they get a little earlier ahead of time, now they have to come back and resubmit.
Correct.
So, my consideration is that if this is going to be approved in total, while yes, if they hundred-year plan, or whatever it might be, if they have to go through step number seven every single time that they're gonna come through here with step number one, two, three, four, and five, six, and seven-
Well, I think you misread, that's why I clarified. Staff recommendation is one, that's what we're voting on.
Let, let, uh, Mr. Chambers has the floor. Mr. Chambers?
So, my amendment would be to approve this in a total, yes, while staff only wants to do one through four. I, I like the light. I even like, I even wanted to go one step earlier with the deceleration lane, I mean, I see that, I see on their drawing, their, their thing here that, yes, they slow it down, but I think that either slow down the road-
So, what, what is your amendment?
Well, my amendment would be this, I move to approve twelve fifty-seven, the NAMI holding, um-
Okay, with that, that-
Okay, with the following conditions, number one, that we approve all phases-
That obviates the, uh, I think that's, I, I think that's out of order.
Oh.
That obviates the, uh, the main motion.
Okay, then the amendment would be approve phases, um, five, six, and seven.
We would vote on the amendment on the lighting, and then we would vote on the main amendment. If you don't like the main amendment being phases one through four, you vote no.
Okay.
If it goes down, then we, you can make a new amendment for the whole project.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you see, you see where you're out of order on that, in other words-
Okay, thanks, I'll make sure.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, let's, um, uh, is there any further discussion on the amendment regarding the lighting? Okay, call for a question. Uh, the, uh, well, let, let's take a vote on it.
This is on amendment.
On the amendment, on, this is on the amendment. For, to add the lighting to the, uh, staff recommendations for approval.
Okay.
So, uh, go ahead, with the, with the roll call.
Uh, Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Delalakis?
You're gonna need to speak into the mic like everybody else that we can hear. That's all right, because-
Okay, Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Delalakis?
Yep, yes.
Mr. Diallosis?
Yes.
Uh, Miss Ayn Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Chairman Francis?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacob Carr?
Yes.
Okay, now we will move on to the main motion. Uh, call, call for a question?
Call for questions?
Yes, the main motion to approve the site plan, according to staff recommendation.
For staff recommendations.
Um, Mr. Chambers?
No.
Um, Mr. Delalakis?
Yes.
Mr. Diallosis?
Yes.
Uh, Miss Ayn Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Chairman Francis?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacob Carr?
Yes.
I don't think, can Mr. Carr vote as the alternative when we have a full board?
Yes, you don't have a full board.
Mr., uh, DeRabulis is out.
Uh, Mrs. DeRabulis is out, and, and he is, Mr. Carr is taking his place as an alternate, so we're, uh, legal. Well, then, uh, thank you, gentlemen, thank you for your patience, and I hope, uh, we didn't beat you up to death. You're welcome. Uh, best of luck to you on your project. Okay, um, we have two applications here that, uh, were deferred, uh, and I want to ask, um, Mr. Chapman, um, with the, with the new laws that were, that were passed, uh, is this gonna be a different venue then that they're coming back with? Or maybe the, uh, Mr. Yakovon can shed some light on this?
I haven't had a chance to look at the new statutes, but, um, I think it will discourage, uh, internet cafes. So, I doubt that the applicants will do that.
Okay, uh, we still have to vote on them however, right? To defer?
To defer, yes.
Okay, uh, let me go ahead and take, uh, item four's application, thirteen dash ten, spinners, business?
Yeah, I, I, I think we can do them both at once, and I, I-
Okay.
Unless Rodney's got a, uh, objection, I would love to defer until the applicant shows some interest in moving forward, so we don't have to keep-
Okay, is that, is, is that a motion that would have to come from one of our members, or?
Well, yeah, who else can make a motion?
That's, okay, I will entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that application, uh, thirteen dash ten, spinner spinners center, and application, uh, thirteen dash fourteen, both be deferred until we hear from the applicants themselves.
Second.
Second, uh, by Mr. Jelusis. Any discussion? Okay, uh, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Delalakis?
Yes.
Mr., uh, Diallosis?
Yes.
Miss Ayn Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Chairman Francis?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacob Carr?
Yes.
Okay, um, at this time, we will take the application, uh, thirteen dash zero for tourist pro arena, this is phase three, is there any expedite communication?
No.
Nope.
Okay, uh, I think we all know, uh, Mr. Sprite, and, uh, he's been here before.
Yes.
So, uh, that's my, uh, declaration that, uh, we, we know who he is, okay?
Uh, for those of you who have been around for a while, uh-
Uh, for those of you who have been around for a while, uh, this is, uh, the final phase in the build out of Turtle Cove Marina, uh, project. Uh, the project is located at six oh one Roosevelt Boulevard. It is a little over one acre of upland. It's in the city's WD-2 zoning district. Um, the site plan is, uh, for a hundred and seventy-six dry slips and fifty-six wet, uh, there on the island, uh, piece of the project. Um, for those of you who, uh, that, uh, are kinda new to the board, Mr. Spade has, uh, been developing this marina, uh, for the past, well, I guess, gone on ten years now. Um, and he's done it in phases. He's had phase one, uh, phase two, clubhouse, and then now he's at phase three. Uh, so the city is happy to see the culmination and completion of this project, uh, as was contemplated ten years ago. You see the TRC comments there in your, uh, in your backup. All our comments have been satisfied. I'll just hit some of the high points on the site plan review criteria. Uh, as far as parking, I try to do my best to break it down as simple terms as possible. Uh, there's sixty-five off-street parking spaces required. The site plan had a deficit of thirteen after all the onsite parking spaces. Available credits and excess parking, uh, were applied. And you see my deter- determination, uh, and calculation there in the staff report. Um, the applicant had the, uh, option of either reducing, excuse me, the number of slips from one seventy-six to one seventy-two, or install a bicycle rack, uh, which would give my ten percent parking credit off the sixty-five number, which would bring in the compliance with the off-street parking requirement. Now applicant has agreed to actually install two bicycle racks, uh, on the property, uh, to satisfy the requirement. Um, as far as level of service analysis, uh, there will be an onsite retention pond. It'll be about four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square feet underneath the building. Um, and all other criteria have been satisfied. Our staff recommendation is one, developer is responsible for acquiring all required jurisdictional permits and meeting requirements of Land Development Code. Two, the construction plans, sign of seal by a registered engineer license to practice in the state of Florida must be submitted within one year of the date of final site plan approval. Three, the site plan shall expire within one year of the effective date unless an application has been filed for building permit. Four, the applicant must install a bicycle rack in order to meet the parking requirements. Five, the architecture of the buildings in phase C must be substantially similar to the style of the buildings that were constructed in phases one and two. And, uh, six, prior to construction permitting, applicant must satisfy the following. Uh, water and fire line must be shown in construction plans, the middle master meter assembly must be shown. Pump station has to be permitted and designed to meet DEP, and a theme, a theme of flood zone requirements. Uh, there's a cross-section along the seawall, uh, and drainage pond on the drain must be provided. And the applicant must provide, or excuse me, must include the sewer force main, which has been installed, a lot of permits. Um, you have a location map, an aerial photograph, a zoning map, a land use plan map, a set of site plans, a landscape plan. And you also have some additional applic- information that was submitted by the applicant. In particular, uh, he's provided a layout that shows, uh, his number of, uh, designated transient boat slips on the island. He has given you a, a section of the dry storage building elevation showing its approximate height of forty-five feet. He also has provided photographs of the, uh, facade treatments that were done for the building as part of, uh, phase one. And then he has also given you copies of, uh, some very good reviews from those who have, uh, visited his marina. And that concludes my remarks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions for staff and, uh, we'll start with, uh, Miss St. Arnold?
Yes, uh, tell me how the bicycle racks take the place of, of parking spaces.
Uh, the code, for as long as I can remember, since I've been there, has, uh, allowed for certain improvements to, uh, reduce, reduce the required number of parking spaces. So, for example, if you are approaching to a planned off-trail, uh, you are allowed to have a reduction if you have a bicycle rack. The logic being that if there, if you are getting to the site by an alternative mode of travel, then you obviously would need a, a vehicle, uh, and a parking space to be provided. And so the same logic would apply here where, uh, Mr. Spade has, uh, people that come to his marina by bicycle, for example. And so, uh, the code gives that flexibility. It's almost an enticement or encouragement to provide those alternative facilities, uh-
I would agree, because if you have a boat and it's the Fourth of July weekend and I've invited four sets of people to go with me-
Right.
Then they're driving extra cars. There wouldn't be, if everybody did that, there wouldn't be enough places for anybody to park.
And it'd be a constrained site, being on an island, and yeah, it's, it's very, it's very tight there.
That would be a concern.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mr. Jelusis, uh, your, uh, questions for staff?
No questions.
Mr. Vincent?
Do we know where the bicycle racks are gonna be placed, or are they on the plans, or is this just a discussion?
This was a discussion that when we talked, I believe he said there would be a rack, um, somewhere on phase two. He, Mr. Spade will kinda give you a little more detail.
Well, my point is that, uh, I think placement of a bicycle rack is important, uh, not just to get a credit, put it somewhere in a corner where no one will see it or use it. Um, I think it needs to be a meaningful location, uh, with a, a plan towards it maybe being used. Uh, I don't have any other questions, uh, right now.
Uh, Mr. Delakis?
Uh, I'm sure the, uh, applicant probably would be more, uh, apt to answer the questions I have, so I'll pass at that time.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chambers?
No questions.
Mr. Carr?
Done.
Okay, anything else for staff? I'll have Mr. Spade.
Edward Spade, eight twenty-seven Roosevelt Boulevard, Tarpon Springs.
Do you have, do you have a presentation or do you?
Uh, I don't know, I, uh, my PowerPoint presentation, my computer died about, uh, two thousand eight when I was in front of you, before the economy busted and, uh-
Yeah.
I got good news. It's only gonna take me time, twelve weeks, so, not, uh, ten years.
Do, do you wanna maybe elaborate on the bicycle rack?
Yeah, the bicycle racks, um, basically were part of, uh, there's a, a group out there called AGLCA, which is, uh, the Looper Society. There's about twenty-five thousand of them that circumvent. Um, we've been found, because most people leave the Panhandle, um, up in Panama City, um, that way and come straight across. And Tarpon Springs has been the direct thoroughfare shot versus going to Clearwater. But there hasn't been a marina in the area, um, that has been able to accommodate larger vessels to come into. Um, the nice thing about Turtle Cove is they're floating docks. They happen to be generally older people. Um, it's easy for them to get on and off their boats and they're right at downtown, so we've actually, our business has picked up about ninety percent in about the last year and a half. And we, you know, know less than one, one given weekend, we have anywhere between eight to ten boats, transient boats in the marina, which in return are walking into sponge docks and going to restaurants and the shops and, and they, they're happy about it too, so. Uh, but the bicycle racks, um, one will be located, um, just going out to the island on the causeway going out, um, so people can park from phase two as well as the island there. And then I'm gonna locate one over by the clubhouse, right on Roosevelt Boulevard, right there. Because we do have a lot of people that live in Innisbrook and the surrounding Tarpon Springs area. A lot of people do ride their bikes to the marina, um, versus taking cars, because they see it's a fitting exercise for them. But, uh, so Rodney, I discussed that with him and it just made sense. Maybe we're talking about one and it's something I've been thinking about doing, but just never got around to it.
Okay, uh, so, Mr. Carr, questions, um, for the applicant, please?
Uh, I have another.
Mr. Chambers?
Uh, at the time.
Mr. Delakis?
Thank you, Mr. Spade.
I do.
Uh, I'd like a little more information about- Maybe you can explain a little bit, but, uh, it talks about an evacuation pump system. It talks about a pump-out system and they were talking about the two-inch PVC line around and when I look at your diagram here, I see a boat wash area and a trench drain and, uh, you know, as, as the marina boat place, can you elaborate as to how you keep boats cleaning from, you know, the process of fat getting into our, uh, the river?
Sure.
Um, well, I know you've done it before-
Yeah.
And some of the others, but when I saw this, they were talking about, uh, using some sort of, uh, metal to potential failure resulting in discharge of sanitary sewer to surface water. And I'm assuming that's what they're referring to, this two-inch PVC and this pump, and then there's a thing here, a nine-hundred gallon tank, and I'm not sure if that's a holding tank or-
Yeah, that, uh-
Maybe explain to us-
Yeah, the nine-hundred gallon tank is actually for, for boat washdown. Um, DEP's restrictions and requirements on boat washdown areas have changed, um, from when I finished, finished my last phase in two thousand nine. Basically, they've required me and my permit, which I already have the environmental resource permit from DEP, that any washdown water from boats have to be retained. It can't discharge back into the Antut River. Um, so we have installed and DEP's approved a catch area where the boat washed, where the boats are washed down. All that water from the soaps and stuff go into a nine-hundred gallon tank or an accommodating tank. It doesn't necessarily have to be nine-hundred gallons, but it's going to go into that.
Right.
Um-
So, that's what these trench drains do? They elaborate?
Only, only, only one of them does. Some of them retain the rain runoff water and they go into the pond on the building. The boat washdown area is in a separate location. It's got like swale, basically. It goes into there. Um, I just met with Ray Page, um, at Public Works, um, a week ago at site and discussed that with him. Um, and the solution we came to that, because their concern was, because I have a letter from the city stating that they will accept the boat washdown runoff water to the sanitary sewer. The city's concern was, okay, that's fine, but we have to have some way to cap that off, because if it starts raining, we don't wanna take rainwater into the sanitary system, which is just gonna overload. So, what we've come up with, and I'll give you the exact wording, because I just gave this to Ray. In that boat washdown area, a drain sump control valve will be installed to the sanitary sewer. Um, basically, it's a T-valve handle that goes into the grate. It's turned. If it's, if there's rainwater coming or at the end of the day, I have a checklist on all my employees. If they will go around, they will turn the valve, uh, at the end of the day. If we're not washing down boats, then the valve doesn't need to be open. Um, that's one. So, that's what the, the pump or that nine-hundred gallon tank is for specifically, just for the boat washdown water. Going back to the PVC pipe, um, when I permitted the wet slips, which was sip, which was different than the high and dry, um, DEP made a requirement upon me. Let's see. I have two separate permits. I have an ERP permit for the wet slips, the fifty-six wet, and then I have the ERP permit for, to construct the high and dry now. The DEP permit that was issued to me back in, uh, July twenty-ninth of two thousand nine, when I put in the, the wet slips on the island, states in here, um, they have a post-construction conditions and then also an operation condition. It states that prior to any slip occupancy, uh, reconfiguration facility authorized with this permit, fixed sewage pump-out facility shall be installed at slips one through four, six through twelve, fourteen through sixteen, eighteen through fifty-one, and attached directly to the city of Tarpon Springs sewer main, as shown, you know, in the plans. Um, and it must stay in place for the life of the facility. Um, I hired a company. I gave DEP all the requirements. It's actually a licensed contractor that does state work for the city marinas. They came in, they attached two-inch PVC pipe on the outside of the seawall all the way around. The city's concern is that PVC over time with UV light can end up cracking and get brittle if a boat, if a boat ran into it. So, what I've agreed to do is anything exterior, because we're one of the few marinas anywhere in the state of Florida that has a pump-out sitting at every single slip. So, there is no discharge of sewer going into the ground like it used to be in years before. So, each slip, what we're doing is that valve there, we're gonna use ductile coming off of that sitting, going back into underground and city, uh, or Ray Page is fine with. Anything as long as the PVC pipe is covered in dirt, which during the construction, we're gonna relocate the line on the inside of the seawall underneath the dirt. And the only thing outside exposed will be ductile where it can't get hit by a boat and discharge back into. That was their concern. So, we've addressed that and, and are planning on doing that.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that. And, uh, when you refer to the wet slips, will there be external docks or you have just like floating docks?
They're, they're all, when, they've been in for almost two years now. Um, they're all floating docks.
Oh, we can't see it without maybe coming in the dock.
I understand. There should be an aerial, there should be a, I, I think, is there a picture there or?
Shows all the external docks?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's what you're referring to as far as each of those have?
Each slip, if you, there, there is a utility plan that, uh, also shows, um, here, I don't, I know staff, I don't have it. But it shows all the docks around the island and it has a legend which shows the connections at each slip-
Oh, okay.
The valves.
Thank you. That was my concern, that's it.
Sir, uh, Mr. Chambers?
No questions?
Am I going backwards?
If you want, you can give it a little bit.
Mr. Vincent, do you have any questions?
I understand you already have the permits you need for the wet slips and for the dry storage?
Yeah, the dry storage permit's here. The dry storage, uh, permit was issued to me, um, on April twenty-ninth of two thousand eleven. Uh, my intention when I came in two thousand eight and gave the whole, uh, when I purchased Eric's marina and the clubhouse parcel, um, was to move forward with it. And unfortunately, like most banks out there today, they decided to go way, way by from me and, uh, I've held on for three years and finally I have the capital to go vertical to make the project successful and make a cash flow. And then, uh, three years I've just held on and I'm here to finish it. So, uh, the wet slips, uh, I went ahead and, because I had the, I had the dollars to complete the wet slips. So, I went ahead and completed the wet slips, because I had the permit, uh, basically. And now I'm moving forward with the capital to go vertical on the high and dry.
What's the difference in height? Uh, you already have some high and dry on there. Other phase one, is that phase one?
They're identical buildings. The same contractor, the same building, the color is the same, the copulas, the tower caps, the audience. They're identical.
Okay, I was just wondering about, so the height's gonna be the same?
They're identical. That, yeah, they're identical buildings, yeah.
Uh, no further questions?
Mr. Jelusis?
No question.
Mr. Arnold?
No question.
Any other questions? Okay, have a seat.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against this application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak for it? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of the meeting and entertain a motion for this-
Motion to approve application thirteen dash zero four, Turtle Cove Marina, phase three.
Second.
As staff recommendation.
Okay, uh, the second was by Miss St. Arnold. Discussion?
Just one comment.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, thank Mr. Spade because, uh, I think you have set an example to how to do things right. And, uh, I know it's been a long, hard road for you and you've stuck through it, uh, and, uh, I'm glad to see that it's finally reaping the benefits of your vision from when you first brought this forward. Thank you.
Okay, call for a question? Roll call.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Delalakis?
Yes.
Mr. Diallosis?
Yes.
Miss St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Chairman Francis?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacob Carr?
Yes. Thank you.
Keep, keep bringing the people to Tarpon.
Okay, uh, we're moving on to application thirteen dash twenty sellers.
I'll thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, uh, as you may, I hope you have a good memory. This is an application for a storage building that- This is an application for a storage building that this board reviewed, uh, back in two thousand and eleven. Uh, unfortunately, the applicant wasn't, wasn't able to secure a, uh, or apply for a building permit within the one year timeframe. So the site plan expired, the applicant is, uh, ready to move forward with permitting now and so it requires that he have received site plan approval again. There's been no changes made to the site plan that was approved a few years ago. Um, just kind of go over a few quick items, uh, property is located at one ninety-nine Roosevelt Boulevard. It's in the W D one A zoning district, the city's commercial fishing development district. As I stated before, the city commission approved the site plan back in December two thousand and eleven. Site plan was to allow the construction of a twenty-four hundred square foot metal building. Um, the applicant did not, uh, apply for a building permit within the one year timeframe and that approval expired, so the applicant is back, uh, to receive approval so he can move forward to construction. Uh, there were new, there were no new comments generated in the review of the, uh, site plan. Um, like I said, no changes were made, uh, from the initial submittal back in two thousand and eleven. Um, city has all the, uh, services available to, uh, adequately serve the property. Uh, we didn't identify any conflicts, uh, with any standards, we did not receive any public correspondence on this item. Therefore, the staff recommendation is to approve the site plan, subject, uh, to the following. Developer is responsible for acquiring all jurisdictional permits and meeting the criteria land development code. They must apply for construction plans within one year of the date of final site plan approval. The site plan shall expire within one year of the effective date unless an application has been filed for a building permit. Uh, four, the architecture of the building must be substantially similar to the elevation submitted by the applicant. And five, their property owner must grant the city a pedestrian easement for the portion of the sidewalk that is on private property. Then you have a location map, an aerial photograph, zoning map, a language plan map, as well as a set of plans, uh, landscape plan and a rendering of the metal building. And that concludes my remarks.
Thanks. Um, we'll start with questions, uh, Mr. St. Arnold for staff.
I don't have any.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Joe Lucis?
No question.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, thank you. Is this the project where the building is basically to store, uh, crab traps?
Yes.
And FEMA made them waterproof it so the crab traps wouldn't get damaged in the flood?
That's correct.
Okay.
Our government dollars at work. Yeah, and this is tax day, April fifteenth.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Delaco?
No question.
Mr. Carr?
None.
Okay, is the applicant here?
My name is Mike Tagorelli, fifty-three, West Tarpon Avenue. I'm here to represent Mr. Sellers, but, um, I don't have a whole lot of comments to bring to the table here. I like Mr. Vincent's comment, that was cute.
It was sincere, too.
It's pretty much the same project from a year ago, nothing's changed.
Any, uh, any questions, um? Mr. Delaco?
Good afternoon, Mr. Tagorelli, so just for the record, the site plan we have is identical and Mr. Chapman, I guess, to what was previously approved. No changes, no alterations, nothing different, exactly as before, right?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we're good on that, thank you.
Uh, this board, board previously approved this, uh-
Yes.
Any questions remaining for the applicant? Okay, have a seat. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against this application? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for it? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion, entertain a motion for application thirteen dash twenty Sellers.
I'll make a motion that we, um, accept application dash thirteen dash twenty.
Second.
For, um, motion was made and seconded, uh, any, any discussion?
I have questions, um, were there any staff, um, recommendations or is that included in your motion?
That's included in the motion, we have a question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Your own call.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Delaco?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Lucis?
Yes.
Mr. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Chairman Francis?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacob Carr?
Yes.
Delac? Yep. Okay, uh, this is application thirteen dash twenty-three Tarpon Starter and Alternator, uh, staff report please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this application is a conditional use request for automobile service in the T four B zoning district. The applicant is, is Mr. Joseph Panino and the subject property is located at four forty-four East Lemon Street. Um, just a little background on the application, the applicant has operated Tarpon Starter and Alternator at three seventy-five South Stafford Avenue since two thousand and eight. Uh, he's come in to us over the, over the years, uh, looking for a piece of property to relocate his business, a piece of property that he can own, um, and operating and expanding his business as it has grown, uh, since two thousand and eight. Uh, he purchased the property at four forty-four East Lemon Street and plans to move his business to the new location and offer additional repair services. Uh, the structure was built in nineteen sixty-four and has had several businesses in the location in the past. Uh, New World Investments, U.S. Commercial Construction and, uh, Gold Electromechanical, uh, have been the most recent, uh, occupants of the building. As far as standards for review, uh, this is a conditional use in the T four B zoning district. Uh, this is in the area of the SMART code and, uh, automobile services defined as a facility conducting activities associated with the repair or maintenance of motor vehicles, trailers and similar, similar large mechanical equipment, painting, bodywork, major overhaul of engine or engine parts and storage or repair. The applicant desires to install starters and alternators along with performing other general automobile repairs including servicing batteries, fan belts, water pumps, et cetera. Applicant has agreed to perform all automobile repair services inside the building and this request meets the requirements contained in the land development code and, uh, the SMART code. Uh, we felt that this use would be consistent with the existing appliances in the area. Uh, when we developed the SMART code, we particularly coded this area, uh, for these types of uses because, uh, we knew there was a need for small business owners that had, um, more of a workshop type business. They needed a location that they could go into in, in the downtown and, and prior to us having the SMART code in effect, the closest place he could get, uh, was a very small portion there on South Stafford Avenue. Um, we found that, uh, the use is consistent with the comfort of the plan. It will not have a, uh, negative impact on environmental or storeful resources. It should have a positive impact upon neighboring property values and the city has all resources to provide services to the property and should have a positive impact on the future growth patterns along this section of East Lemon Street. You'll see the TRC comments, uh, there and your staff report. Uh, we have properly noticed the application and have not received any correspondence, uh, to date. Uh, therefore, the staff recommendation is to approve the conditional use for automobile service for property located at four forty-four East Lemon Street in the T four B, uh, zoning district. Uh, provided you a photograph of the building as well as a location map, aerial photograph, a zoning map, a territory district, uh, map, as well as a description of the proposed use, uh, prepared by the applicant. Uh, any questions?
Mr. Chairman? Uh, start with Mr. Vincent.
Uh, I have a preliminary question of, uh, Mr. Yakovon. Um, this applicant, uh, the site is near my office and I probably want to make some comments about that, so I don't know if I need to step down from the board, uh, about the, just the impact that, you know, concerns of the impact on my location.
Uh, yes, I think you need to, um, it's either an actual conflict of interest or a possible conflict of interest.
Okay.
Or it has the appearance of a conflict of interest.
Okay, well then I'll, then I'll step down for this item, Mr. Chairman.
But you are allowed to speak though.
No, no, you can't speak.
And you need to get a, uh-
No.
A form from the clerk.
Yes, I know all about it, I've got-
Conflict of interest form.
Okay.
Yes, this car, uh, car can, I've already filled mine out, uh, it was turned in on time and I stood down when I had to. We're mighty, uh, proud of you, uh, Mr. Vincent.
You can speak as a public comment.
Yes. Yeah, if, if, if he, uh, if he were, uh, a commissioner again, this was a commission meeting, he would be allowed to speak, but he could not vote. Is that not, uh, correct, Mr. Yakovon?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, questions for staff? Mr. Carr?
I, I saw the back, uh, sheet about parking, uh, is there a significant amount of parking you think that fits for what this class industry is and another street parking, et cetera, and parking lots and neighboring businesses, so?
Yes, we feel it's adequate, uh, for informal use. Um, he'll explain to you kind of his, what he does for a living and, um, it's given us a lot of comfort once we fully understood, you know, what he is, uh, what he is doing down on South Stafford Avenue and what he plans to do here on Lemon Street.
Mr. Chambers?
I'm sorry, I don't know if this falls into our spectrum or not, but I know there's residential houses behind him and there's certain days, like a Sunday of some sort. Is there an hourly, I mean, do you expect to have his business open on Sundays and he may can?
We have not discussed hours of operation, but we can talk about that once he's, uh, up here talking to us.
Yeah, you can ask the applicant. Delac?
I'm good.
Mr. Joe Lucis?
No, no question.
Mr. Arnold?
No question.
Okay. Come on down.
Joe Panino, two six oh eight Trent Road, Palm Harbor. Do you have any questions, uh, have anything to say really?
Okay, you, um, you, you want, you want to make any statement or anything or?
Well, um, yeah, okay.
Why don't you just take the mic off the, uh, thing, it'd be a lot easier, it-
Sure. I've, uh, I started my business up on Stafford Avenue down there and, uh, there's very few pockets in Tarpon I can operate out of. And I, I've been renting for four years, nine hundred bucks a month, and I finally found this place on Lemon which will work for me and, you know, I don't want to rent no more. So I'm going to, uh, fix it up nice, I'm going to, uh, apply for a building permit, do the front face of the building and I don't work on Sundays, I don't even work on Saturdays anymore, you know, I'm fifty-six, I'm over all that. And I, most of my work is picking up from like, uh, other places and bringing it to my shop and that type of thing. There's people coming every now and then, but, you know, a lot of my work is pick up delivery, a lot of it's brand, most of it's brand new. I sell brand new and just resell parts, you know, that type of thing. That's it.
All right, uh, questions, um, Mr. Carr, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess the one question I had was about the parking issue, uh, so mostly you bring in cars from other shops and you work on them during the day?
You know, I don't work on a lot of cars, I'm, you know, I, I want the opportunity that if there's an easy job and somebody says, hey, can you put the alternator on, yeah, I'll do it. But I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to put a lift in, I'm not, I don't make my money working on cars really. I just want the opportunity though, you know, people bring their car there and needs an alternator and it's an easy one, I can do it in the garage, I'd like to be able to do it, you know.
Okay, yeah. I just want to make sure it's not an excessive amount of cars parked in the back or something.
No, no, no. No, I just, I don't really want to work on cars that much, you know.
Mr. Chambers?
No question.
Uh, Mr. Panino, it states here in the comments that you, uh, the applicant will perform all automobile services inside the building and-
Oh, yes.
You have agreed to that?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Sure.
We're good there, thank you.
Mr. Joe Lucis?
No question.
St. Arnold?
No question.
Okay, uh, all right, and we'll, um, close the, um, so is there anybody who wishes to speak against this? Please come to the lecture and identify yourself.
Well, uh, Bill Vincent, uh, my office is one ten South Lewis Avenue, Tarpon Springs. I'm not sure I'm going to speak against it, but maybe not for it either. Uh, my concern is my office is located, uh, just across the street basically from, uh, this property, um, and there's already one auto, uh, uh, repair place, uh, near Contra's Roofing. And from time to time, there's so much noise coming from that facility, I mean, it almost shakes my, my building. You know, it's just a little cracker style house up on, on the blocks, but, um, and so my concern was the noise basically, I, I, and if he's doing the work inside and if, if it's, if it doesn't create a lot of noise, then I don't have a problem with it. And that's just my main concern is, you know, the, the effect of, uh, the noise, if it's any generated by his work. Thank you.
Do you want to address that? The, uh, noise factor?
Sure, yeah, no, it's, like I said, I'm going to run about a probably three person operation there. Uh, you know, like I said, I'm fifty-six, I'm just, it's not, what I do basically is I, I get pallet loads of stuff in, unfortunately, from overseas and I just sell it, you know, it's, uh, I'd much rather just buy and resell than manufacture, it's easier. And it's, it's the way things are nowadays, you can't get anybody to work for you, it's just, it's buying and selling nowadays. There's going to be a little noise, but it's not going to be, it's going to be noise, it's just going to be like, uh, it really ain't noise, it's just day to day noise, I got an air compressor, it'll be inside the building, you know, that type of thing. That place on the corner there, I don't know really what's going on there. Are you, are you sure that's an auto repair facility? Okay, I mean, so don't put me with those guys, okay? I mean, that's, uh, yeah, I'm not in the same boat as those guys right now. I'm not going to be hearing chisels and air, air tools going off and that type of thing, okay?
Okay, uh, anybody for it? Seeing none, have a seat. Entertainer motion.
Motion to approve application thirteen dash twenty-three Tarpon Starter and Alternator with the following condition. Where is it? Um, all automobile services will be performed inside the building. Also, waste fluids must be stored in appropriate containers and excess accumulation of waste oils and fluids is not allowed.
A second?
Second.
Okay, he was fast, he was wrong down there.
That's fine.
Okay. Mr. Carr? Discussion? Seeing none, your own call.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Dal, Delaco?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Lucis?
Yes.
Mr. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Oh, he can't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's confused.
Okay. Uh, Chairman Francis?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacob Carr?
Yes.
Delac? Still got staff comments?
I think she's got a form down here for you already, she brought it with her.
Yeah.
Sir?
The form that, uh, Mr. Vincent, um, needs, she has there already, so. She doesn't, she doesn't have to come back?
Recusal form. Oh, he, she has one.
We have one for you.
I'll put it up on the way down, thanks.
They learn from me, uh, you have any trouble with it, uh, you call Mr. Yakovon, he, he knows how to, he'll give you the exact answer. Yeah, that's right, I forgot, you're an attorney too. Oh, boy. Okay, uh, Mr. Rodney, any staff comments or?
I, I don't, I don't- Uh, I have a comment. Uh, my days with you are numbered, um, I sent a memo to the Board of Commissioners last week announcing that I am retiring as of August.
Good for you.
It was my plan to, um, stick around for a couple of years, but my, uh, youngest is going off to University of North Florida this summer, uh, to start college and, uh, about a month and a half ago, my wife turned to me and said, uh, so why are we staying? And, uh, I didn't have a good answer, so the time is right, I think the city-
And, uh, I didn't have a good answer, so the time is right, I think the city's in good shape, I think, uh, uh, it's just an appropriate time for me to, uh, move to North Georgia and go mountain man, so. Uh, with any lockar, with the approval of the board, my partner Jay, uh, will be taking over as, uh, city attorney. Um, Jay has done, Jay actually represents three cities, uh, more than I do actually. Um, and, uh, uh, he's done, already done some very successful work for the city on the alternate wa- water treatment plant preserving that. And, uh, so in the coming months, I plan to bring him to these meetings and, uh, familiarize him with the procedure and, uh, let you guys get to know him.
You're gonna, you're really gonna do that, Chairman?
I tell you what, I wouldn't, when I took over the city, I wouldn't have done that to anyone. But a lot of things have changed, I think, due to, uh, well, really Mark Lacorice had a lot to do with changing the way the city works. And, uh, so it's a good, it's a good time really to make the transition to another attorney here. All he's got to deal with is typical city problems, not unusual city problems.
Okay. Well, we'll be seeing you a few more times.
Yes.
Uh, board comment?
Chairman? Um, just wanna, just wanna give you guys an update on the weekly event I told you about last week. Um, tomorrow, we're coming to the commission meeting to ask for a proclamation. We have between fifty and a hundred, um, veterans coming to the event to support it, plus also we've had, um, communication with about four or five different media outlets that are gonna be here. Um, the Sand Soldiers of America, um, with their organization for the five oh one C three is proud of the event that we've planned, and our books and records are open to anybody for review.
That's, oh, what, can you send, might you send us some information on it?
I will, I'll bring it with me next time.
Would that be acceptable, I mean, uh, o- okay.
Yeah, the city will be behind it, has it tomorrow, so, but I'll bring it up to you.
All right. Yes, there's, uh, no other business, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chairman?
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.